Take a nomination for chairman running.
I move that Alan Williams or nominate Alan Williams to be our chairman.
Need a second?
Any other nominations?
I move to nominate Darrell Bone as chairman.
Any other nominations?
I move the nominations be closed.
Okay. Let's call for vote. All in favor for Alan Williams, please signify by raising your hands and saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor for Darrell Bone for chairman, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All right, I congratulate Mr. Alan Williams on chairman. All right. Thank you.
Oh, I appreciate it.
If our open nominations for vice chair, I'd like to thank. Honored me to be chair. And I will be as transparent as I've always been. And I will be forthcoming with any knowledge to all the commissioners as I get it. So if I know it, you're gonna know it. It's necessary for the office to know it, the office will know it also. So with that, uh, I open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate Alan Childress for vice chair.
We have Alan Childress. Are there any other nominations?
I so moved to nominate Darrell Bone as vice chair.
We have Darrell Bone as vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Do I hear a motion to nominations be closed?
Motion nominations be closed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing nominations, let it known by raising your hand. And it is unanimous to close the nominations. Okay, I'll take them in order of nominated. Those for Alan Childress for vice chair, please raise your hand. We have three. Those for Darrell Bone for chair. Okay, we have, okay, let's do this again. Try to raise your hand while you see them. All those for Alan Childress for chair, raise your hand. So we have three. One, two, three, four, excuse me, have four. I can't even count. All those for Darrell Bone for vice chair.
Aye.
We have three. So congratulations, Alan Childress, you are the vice chair for the incoming year. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, uh, Commissioner Bone, second Commissioner Childress, all in favor, raise your hand. And it is unanimous to adjourn. We will assemble back here at ten o'clock. For our work session, the meeting will start immediately. What time is it now, people? I got my phone off.
Nine thirty-four.
We'll be, we'll assemble at ten o'clock, work session, the meeting will follow immediately at eleven o'clock.
Lady and gentlemen, gotta change everything up now. Uh, I will be asking, uh, for a resolution to reclassify Logan Porter to a full-time deputy from corrections officer. I'll be asking for a resolution to reclassify Jonathan Oliver from full-time to a full-time jail, uh, shift lieutenant, uh, from patrol. Uh, approve, ask for a resolution, a reclassification from Mickey Harwick to full-time jail lieutenant, uh, from part-time jail. Ask for a resolution to hire Hunter Jones as full-time deputy sheriff. And approve to hire Rodriguez Moten as a part-time deputy. Ask for a resolution to hire Justin Smithman as a part-time deputy. And ask for a resolution for Matt Mosley to be hired as a part-time process server. That's what I'll be asking for.
Anybody got any questions?
They're, they're all budgeted, right?
I have a question. I have a question. Um, I, I've been at past meetings, these people that you bring for, these officers, is any way possible that they could come to the meeting when you wanted to, uh, at night or whenever we do our meetings? Cause I like to put a, a face with the name. Is that possible?
Well, I mean, a lot of them are not officers until they're voted on by y'all.
Okay, okay, cause I just don't, I, I don't know a lot of people. And I really like, if I'm not asking too much.
Well, I mean, we've never, we've never really done that, but you're gonna be paying them if they come, so.
Okay, okay, okay. So maybe I have to make a point and get with you and say this is, I'm just gonna say Logan Porter. Okay, okay, I just don't know them, okay? Makes sense, you all?
Well, that's what I said, a lot of, I don't even.
And we need, and we need to know them?
Oh, they're vetted.
Okay, okay.
They're vetted, I just don't know who they are until I bring them to y'all and, you know, then y'all vote on them.
Okay.
Yeah, she, you, she, he might explain to her the new ones, your, how this process works.
We got a hiring process, uh, we got a hiring board, uh, they go before the, they fill out an application, they go before the hiring board, you know, that process, and they're, they're voted on, uh, by the hiring board, you know, by the qualifications, by their, where they do their job, by the way they do, uh, the interviews and stuff like that.
Okay, so they're not hired yet, unlike city, you know, you know, I think I'm kinda like city, that person a little bit different, okay.
So, some of these work force, but not all of them do.
Well, actually, we're not hiring them.
I am.
We're basically approving them to put them on the payroll.
Right.
Because it's the county commissioner's responsibility to handle the payroll and personnel. If I miss anything, y'all fill in the blank. So actually, he's an elected official.
I'm hiring him.
We have no say in who we hire, just like the probate judge and, uh, revenue commissioner. We put those on payroll and that's, that's all we do.
Give or tell your hint and ask them about our process, they can tell you about our process.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we're welcome to come down and visit anytime.
Anytime you want to.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, Judge Calhoun.
Yes, sir.
Probate judge.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Congratulations on a successful campaign.
Morning.
Oh, you might tell us, how many exactly do we have to vote Tuesday?
We, uh, we wrapped up our final canvassing of the election results yesterday. Uh, and that total number is nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-five ballots casted.
Record.
Record high. Percentage wise, sixty-six percent. I was pushing for seventy or above and we got sixty-six, that's pretty close, so.
Didn't, uh, I just had to get that out there because I saw the judge yesterday and asked while they were finishing up counting. I knew it was gonna be a record, but I had no idea we were that close to twenty thousand ballots.
Just a little shy of twenty thousand, uh, ballots casted in Chilton County.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, so that's good, it's a great turnout. Uh, I'll just be asking for a new hire resolution, uh, Ms. Deanna Davenport, uh, as the probate clerk, uh, position effective October twenty-eighth at the pay rate shown on your attachment. Uh, she's been with us for a little over a week now and she, uh, uh, appears to be a really good hire for the probate office. And so we're excited to have her, uh, as part of our team and I think she'll do a great job serving the, the community and the people of Chilton County.
Anybody have any questions about how it works in the payroll?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Sylvia, commission office.
First on the list, uh, penalty forgiveness for businesses, pice by Mike, two sixty-two ninety-five, and Michael's Company, thirty dollars and twenty-two cents. In the past, we have forgiven the late filing fees or the penalty, this is not the tax. Um, and it's the first time this has ever happened. If it happens again, certainly we would not do this, we wouldn't repeat this process.
This is a usual and customary for us to forgive.
We have done this, yes.
First, first time.
Yeah, and only time. Uh, we have an, uh, request for, uh, an ad for the progress edition, uh, the cost is two hundred and seventy-five dollars. This will be published in February of twenty twenty-five. And, uh, of course, that's, uh, an ad that we put in that progress edition. And it'll be the first time that the new commission will show up in print other than the newspaper, so. Um, if you would, uh, would like to have that done, that's the cost and that's when it will take place. Uh, have a new hire finally for the commission office, Brittany De Jarnet. Uh, would like to, um, hire her effective November eighteenth, um, at the pay rate that's shown on the attachment. She's, uh, we interviewed several, uh, last week and, uh, she seems like a great candidate for the position.
This is taking Tiffany's place at the front.
Yes, we've reclassified Tiffany and, uh, Miranda, she will be taking, uh, Tiffany's place, but she comes, uh, a little overqualified. But we're excited because, uh, in that office, of course, we are always, we're, uh, gearing for those that have accounting degrees or college, college educated, whatever, because of the type of work that we have to do, so.
Well, this is pretty much a cross chain.
Absolutely.
Cross chain all of it.
Absolutely. Uh, the previous meeting, I had asked for a carryover for reappraisal and, and in that time, I'll wait. In that time, there were other charges that came in that got applied against the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So I had to change the amount of the carryover. And I just wanted to, um, amend the previous minutes to show that that, uh, carryover is two seventeen oh one eight thirty-four. Uh, if, uh, you don't understand what that is, reappraisal is funded first off of our ad valorem taxes. Um, that co, that comes off first and then the rest is distributed by that complicated formula that they have. Um, the carryover in this case, it could have actually been paid back to the state and then redistributed, but we just chose to carry it over. It is taken off the budget for reappraisal so that if they have a, an eight hundred thousand dollar budget, then all they'll, they'll be requesting off the top will be the eight hundred thousand minus this amount because we have this in the bank. So I'm just asking to amend from the previous meeting. Um, twenty twenty-five severe weather preparedness tax holiday, February twenty-first through the twenty-third. Um, that weekend, uh, if you so choose, they would not withhold two cents of the county tax in the county and one cent in the city, uh, the city limits.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd, I'd like to say something about that real fast. Um, I've, I've, of course, been a big proponent of participation in severe weather tax preparedness weekend, offering a little bit of discount to the citizens, also the school, the back-to-school tax that occurs, I guess that's in August normally. Um, I went yesterday and spoke with, uh, four different, um, different businesses. A couple that would be, uh, affected directly by, you know, that they sell stuff that they could participate in the severe weather, uh, preparedness plan. And a couple of others that would not, uh, typically participate in the severe weather, but they would in the back to school. And I went in those, uh, businesses for the reason to determine how complicated on their POS system, which is point-of-sale system, uh, that it would be to, to roll that tax back or, or what have you. Uh, all of them indicated that they would, they would like to, for us to be, um, to do this. That, um, it's a pretty simple formula that they have, uh, bigger corporations, it's done up corporate and it's just sent down through a computer software program anyway. Um, and the smaller local ones, they have a toggle switch on their POS system that they can change it to where they are only collecting the correct amount of tax that day. So, um, one of them that I spoke to, um, even said that if they knew in advance that we were gonna do this, they would bring in items in inventory to be able to offer that. Um, and I think that we need to look at it as, as keeping, um, sales here local. Um, we're, we're having a lot of citizens travel outside of county to spend money, um, out of the perception of a great, uh, discount that they're getting. And I feel like offering that discount, one, it's a, it's a good service to the citizens of the county. And that's, um, the perceived loss, I guess, in revenue that we would normally collect is gonna be, um, over and above that on other items when they stay here to buy their generator or their rope or their flashlights or batteries or clothes or whatever, they're gonna buy other things like food and drinks and gas and all that and they're gonna, you know. So basically, it's helping shop to keep, keep everybody local. So I think it's a good thing if we do this.
Is there any kind of, anybody gonna be notified other than the businesses in the county if we do this?
We'll notify the state and the state takes care of.
Is there a deadline that the state has to know by?
Yes, I mean, it, um, I'm sorry, I just ran across that. Uh, they have to be notified by January twenty-first.
Right.
Is, is this gonna, uh, will the schools' tax be exempt from that too?
No, we're not asking for the school tax, we're just asking for ours.
Yeah, the, the school, the school and the hospital would still get collected. So if, 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 if we made that decision, then right here inside the city, City of Clayton participates in it and the state participates in it. So basically, inside the City of Clayton, instead of a ten percent tax, they would pay two percent tax that day, they'd save eight percent. That's all I got.
Anybody else?
Do you wish to pull that off into a later date or, uh, is that something that we'll need to remove from the?
Any other information that we might need before we vote on this? Anybody have any questions they wanna get more information on?
Don't wanna pile on too hard, but I'm totally in agreement with it. We, you know, the interstate brings us a lot of business. But it also, uh, causes us some leakage. And anything that we can do to keep people here in Chilton County spending Chilton County money in Chilton County, I think is, uh, is worthwhile. And I think that this would be a pretty good incentive. It's a great idea, uh, Roger, about notifying businesses sooner that we're gonna do it and that they can stock things that, that may bring people into their stores and offset any of the tax revenue that we may lose. But if we can, uh, change people's habits, then we'll be better in the long run.
I don't think we're gonna do it, we need to wait until we can, if these businesses can get a notice, get a head of it, and then we can stop working.
I totally agree.
Okay. All right, next.
Um, work sessions before meetings, um, just for the new, uh, commissioners, we have a resolution on the books that we, um, in order to act on any item, we have to discuss it in a work session.
All right, I, I got something. So I, from the time, for a year and a half ago, coming to the meetings, I've, I've seen the meetings where the work session was on the Monday preceding the Tuesday of the meeting. And I felt like, in my opinion, from the outside looking in at that time, that, um, there's a lot more conversation, a lot more in-depth conversation, a lot more research is going into things and you're not pressed for a lot of time if you move the work session off of the meeting night. So I would like to see the work session moved back to Monday and then back up the time of the work session would be Monday at six-thirty to allow for several of our commissioners to be able to get here, uh, a little more convenient for travel and, uh, and things. But I, I feel like having that work session on that, that night enables, um, enables us to get more in-depth with some conversation and not be so pressed for time running up against the meeting. And then it also offers us an opportunity to, if something comes up on that Monday night that we wanna research a little bit more, we don't have just less than an hour or a break between the meeting to try to research it, that we can either reach out to people we know that we trust or that, that are experts in the field and get their opinion on things. And, uh, we can make more informed decisions if we have that little bit of, at least a twenty-four hour window.
The, uh, my issue with the Monday prior, I don't have, I don't have a problem with it, but that is, if we're good, if we work with the, say, the City of Clayton on anything, that's the night they have their council meeting on Mondays prior to our meetings.
Are they, are they on the same night?
They're Monday prior to, right, we meet the second, fourth Tuesday, they meet second, fourth Monday. Very seldom during the year are they meeting an off week from us.
Is that coming up, is that conflict a lot?
Yeah, it's pretty much the same meeting night.
No, I'm not talking about the meeting, I'm talking about something that we need.
Oh, I don't know.
The issues, is it conflict a lot?
I haven't, I haven't been chairman, so I don't know how many times a chairman's been over there, you know, during the meetings.
Don't, ain't they're meeting earlier than hours, huh?
I think they start at five, right?
Yeah, they're, they done about fifteen minutes.
Yeah, they're using them by six, so that one conflict then. I didn't think about that, my apologies.
And I, and I would move six, six-thirty, I think we have some, some members on the commission that six-thirty would be more beneficial to also.
Anybody else?
Roger and I have talked about this and, uh, I, that's a, I think it's a good idea. I think we'll, we'll find our groove as we move forward as a commission. Uh, I'm not ready to change anything about the frequency of meetings right now, but in the future, we may get to a point where we don't need a work session before every meeting. But, uh, uh, I'm good with moving it to a Monday night and I like the six-thirty idea. I think we do have a couple that would, that would benefit.
We've had a couple issues in the past, most, pretty much recently, where we didn't have enough time in the work session, it's time for meetings to start. By law, you set the meeting at a certain time and it's supposed to begin, we take up that time, so I think that's a good idea to move to a different night. Anybody else got comments about?
What about meeting times?
Same time, six-thirty. Doesn't matter.
So meeting times at six-thirty on specified Tuesdays and work sessions six-thirty on Monday prior.
I'll add it to the regular agenda.
Okay. All right.
I was still gonna do this as a consent agenda.
You want it all?
Does that change need to be, does that change need to be done? I mean, on the consent agenda, it's supposed to be anything that would be non-controversial, wouldn't we need a separate vote, just put it as a separate vote?
I'll just put it on regular.
Just do it as, so everybody knows where everybody stands.
You may change mine between now and then, so. Um, any other discussion about the work sessions, I'll have it put on the regular agenda to be discussed again in the regular meeting. Um, the commissioner's handbook, uh, everybody should have a new commissioner's handbook and it should have, uh, budget, finance, other finances, personnel, um, fire departments, contact numbers. It should have, I would hope, most things that you would need. Um, and as it goes, if there are other questions or help, assistance that you might need, always call on us at the commission office. Uh, come by every chance you get, um, and get to know that, those that you, the few that don't, get to know the, uh, members of that office. But we'll, we'll be glad to help in any way that we possibly can, so.
And there's something, uh, encourage each commission to read through our rules and procedures, look through them real close, and if there's any changes that need to be made, I would like to get those in and made, you know, if not by our next meeting, at least the first meeting and the only meeting in December, get those changed, if there's any changes that you want. And I think, uh, are the list of different committees, aren't they in here?
There, in there as well.
And there's committees in here that the chairman appoints and I would like each of you to go through those, the committees and rank the committee you would, uh, the committee you'd like to be on. And rank them one through three, one through fifteen, whatever you want. And then I'm gonna plan to sit down with each of you and talk to you about those committees and try to give each of you the committees that you feel comfortable with and want to be a part of.
Are you talking about the commissioners' responsibilities that you, all right, I don't know that that's in there. That would be something that you would need to, um, as you say, sit down and discuss with them and then we can, uh, produce a copy for everybody to have, cause we wouldn't have known who's, who's what.
If you can get a list and get each one, everybody got, she has everybody's email and information. You need to get it emailed to you or she can probably print you off a copy, but I'd like to do that if possible between now and the next meeting so I can talk to each one of you and we can decide. I don't wanna just make the decision arbitrarily, I'd rather talk to each of y'all and get your ideas. I'm gonna try to rank it and figure out which direction we gonna go. Yes, yes, that's, um, thank you, Commissioner Bone. Uh, when you have an assignment for a specific task or area, I ask that you respect that commissioner who's over any particular area by talking to them prior to getting in the middle of anything going on there. If it's road department, it's parks, it's courthouse, and I've been as guilty as anybody, I'm not gonna deny that. But go through the proper commissioner, that'll be part of your, your task. And has been called in the past, we've liaised on that area. That's why, one reason I want to get each of your opinions on what you'd like to be in charge of.
Stay in our lane, but involve that particular commissioner as soon as possible. Cause things will come to us that's in that other person's, uh, responsibility. But as soon as we can involve that, that chair.
Well, while, while we're on that, I'm gonna address this. If, if, if continuing, the office gets what kind of complaints, the particular commissioner who has an assigned area is not at least bringing it to the rest of the commission or bring it to the office's attention, I promise you, I will have that discussion with that chick, with that commissioner. Cause I think each of us take our responsibilities serious and that's another reason I wanna make sure what your assignment, what your responsibilities are, something you're, you're interested in.
And you need to be sure that, uh, the, whoever they in charge of comes to them and asks them. Cause some, I, I have seen where you'll be over something and they'll say, well, oh, so-and-so, he, you know, he, he won't do this, he won't do that, when nobody's mentioning it.
Well, if, if y'all, if y'all will relax and instruct me to, I'll go to each group. Uh, I'll give you the example, I was the storm shelters, the firefighter association, I went to them and I handled it. So, you know, if you want me to go to each group, I'll go there and basically I can take you or we'll go together and introduce you and tell you, look, here's your contact. Call this person first, cause they gonna handle it. That's why I wanna be able to introduce you, you gonna handle whatever's brought to you. So is that?
Not that, not that it's needed, but I think it's the high touch that will get us, uh, introduced to the community and those that we're serving, so.
Yes, 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 Commissioner, uh, Williams, yes, I, I would like that, being on the other side of the commission. A lot of times, we do not know who does what because we are not district, district. And, uh, that is very important to the people because we need to keep the general public informed so they know who to call. Who do I call if I'm on County Road, um, uh, twenty in Maplesville regarding the road? So we, yeah, they need, the, the general public need more, as I say, transparency so they know how, so we won't be upset. And come to meetings, cause I, I'm a big, 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 uh, advocate for people being informed cause I understand it's the best thing that we all can have. And I feel like that's where a lot of issues in our county has, um, fallen because we just don't, don't know who to go to or who, so that's, that's my duty with, uh, so we'll know who to direct to if you're over the Humane Society or whatever.
You know, I, look, is that on our website?
It is there, there is.
Any assignments?
It has the assignments on there. Yes, it's on the county commissioner website. But a lot of people are not as computer, computer savvy or Facebook or whatever savvy, so we do need to work together where we can have that more accessible and available to the community.
And, but two, you need to, them, them.
And, but two, you need to, them, them people need to know that, that the, um, the folks you're over, like the humane society, where just because you say call them and they'll take care of you, don't mean they gonna say, yes, we're gonna give you this. You, you gonna take care of them and the best way to, that your budget is money for. You can't just, you know, cause some of them, you'll say, you know, they'll take care of you. Well, you know, they expecting to get what they want.
Concerning what, what you calling out.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll look into the problems you got to.
I tell you something else she brought up that I'd really like to see. I've liked to see this ever since I've been on here, but I've never had a commission that I thought we're gonna do it. Uh, this county needs to be split up into seven districts and the road districts and put each one of us in a little district. Them people in this community's got a road problem, call this guy right here and it takes every, I mean, you know, ain't somebody on the north end of the county ain't calling me way down here in the south end of the county. Unless that's my district I get over and then I'll be having to learn them and learn the district, you know, to where each one of us can, can go to, to Matt with the road.
Not, not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Our biggest problem in this county is road problem.
Yes, yes.
Everybody shares a little part in that problem. If their little district, the people might feel like, well, you know, he's taking care of me. I wanna keep him. Or she's taking care of me, I wanna keep her.
Yeah, cause I live generally in Maplesville area, yeah.
Taking care of somebody, then they may wanna change you out next time.
You wanna get hit to break our county up into seven areas and see what he can find, basically make it an even number of miles?
That's, yeah.
What do y'all think about that?
Yes, the general inform.
It don't mean we're gonna adopt what he brings, but it'll give us a starting.
Something, I should.
Well, and it, and it lets us know that if Ms. Smith on county road, twenty in Maplesville call, she can call Sheila. Sheila can communicate with Keith and, um, uh, however we decide to do it.
We still have a commissioner in it, but be over the road department?
Yeah, over you that's it.
Yeah, you have to go.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Chain of command with it, yes.
Do you think the chair's gonna have enough time to oversee a district or should it be six districts and then uh we move it out? Hopefully the chair's gonna be real busy.
Six and you can be out.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I'm not gonna be sitting behind eight days chair. I'm basically semi-retired. I do what I want, when I want, basically.
Right.
So I'm planning on being an active chairman, uh, whatever I need to do. So if I need to take a district, I have no problem taking a district, but you need to keep in mind, when you do this, the next chairman coming in, is he gonna want to do the same thing?
Cross that bridge, we'll get to it.
Well, no, you need to have that ahead of time. That needs to be something said. If we're gonna break it up into districts, then we need to know, alright, we don't wanna obligate the next chairman for a district and all else he's got to do. Or we're gonna expect that chairman to do this and, you know, take, fill the calls from that period.
We can have, maybe the engineer develop both scenarios, six, six zones or six districts and, and a seven district and make that determination.
So at, at our next.
I hope that you're be, I hope we're gonna wear you out doing other things.
I'm agreeing with that. Let's just try.
Work session.
Way first influence.
Yeah, I mean, if it don't work, you don't have to keep.
Give them a district.
Yeah, and if, and if he can't, then we, we can sort of regroup with a, a six when we's, or something, you know.
Yes.
Okay.
That's easy.
Alright.
To kinda go along with uh your, um, uh, different responsibilities for the commissioners, a lot of you will get calls from people in the courthouse. And this happens on a regular basis because there's always something going wrong with this courthouse. Um, if you do get a call that says, you know, it's flooding up on third floor or it's, it's whatever on the bottom floor, ask them to immediately call the commission office because we uh put into place a work order system. And that way, which we did this some time ago, but it just makes it so much easier to get things done if we have, have that reported so that we can put it on the list to be done immediately. So just in case you get calls about something's wrong with my office or whatever, just tell them to call the commission office and put in a work order and we'll make sure that it gets done as soon as possible. That's just information on them. Um, the last thing I have, um, this is the second meeting coming up for the subdivision committee nominations. We nominated three. Um, at the last one, there are three addition, they wanted to add three additional members. Uh, Jeff Carroll, Denny Carroll and Jason Cleckley were the three that were nominated last time. This will be the second meeting of the three.
Were they additional, were they additions to others and do you have those others?
Yes, and, and I have been trying to find the original list, um, uh, because it was originally a.
Alan Payton, and they, Blake Addix and.
Uh, Thomas. Thomas was adding to that original committee and that was not dissolved.
The surveyor who we cannot.
That's Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas is a surveyor, I believe.
Thomasen?
Thomas.
Is a.
I thought, I thought my name said.
Heath, Heath may uh remember. Who was the gentleman sitting with us that day out there?
Got an email.
Michael, uh.
Mike Carroll?
No.
I'm almost sure it's Thomas. I think it is. I, I mean, I can dig through my name.
So the.
We, we can get that.
Okay, alright. So anyway, the additional three, uh, if you have any more nominations, we'll be doing that in the.
Mike Thomas. Mike Thomas.
Mike Thomas?
Mike Thomas.
Uh, we'll do that in the uh regular part of our uh meeting.
Yeah.
And that's all I have unless any of you have questions for me.
Does that sound correct? Pete, Mike Thomas.
Yeah.
Commissioner Perkins has a question.
Yeah, just in, as a generalized rule question, excuse me. On taking the nominations for a, uh, this, like this commission or the committee, are, are we contacting those people prior to nominating them? I always do.
If you, I would.
Yeah, you don't wanna nominate somebody that, that ain't interested.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I was, I was asked to ask because I was told that there's been a couple that was, had been, had been nominated that hadn't been actually officially asked by anybody. So I didn't know if we had gone out and we nominated them and then we were gonna ask them later. I just didn't know the whole process or what needed to be done prior to.
Of the, of the three.
I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna get through three nomination weeks and then vote them in and they're like, well, I'm not gonna do that, so.
Okay.
Well, there's also another question here and it's a question that I, I discussed on board on occasion with this committee and ambulance committee. This commission never officially gave a charge to either one of them before we had any more nominations. Do we want to rescind this and start over and give this, this committee a charge exactly what we're looking for?
So neither committee was given a charge?
Nope, not, not officially a charge from this commission.
Then they basically.
Yeah, that's why we discussed this in the work session. I might get the same thing in, in the meeting if that's there.
Chair, chairman, you wanted to find what actually charging a committee?
A charge to give them a direction of what you're looking for. You tell them what you want to bring. Uh, and I can go more specifically to the ambulance committee. The ambulance committee needs to bring us a, they need to have a charge to bring us what is the best type system we need. Not a scattergun type of approach. They need to tell us what we need to do. I think the subdivision committee needs to be the same thing.
Okay, needs to be renamed.
Uh, I agree, but the only way to rename it, you have to abolish it and start over.
Absolutely, and know their, and know their responsibilities. How can you take a position?
What, what has been, what, and this may be out of order, but what has been done so far? Nothing has been brought to any, it's advisory.
Oh, this is like an advisory.
But they hadn't started to advise us on anything, correct?
Not, not the commission as the body.
So if we were to just abolish both and just start over clean slate, we can do what we want to with it?
Yep.
Absolutely, so we can have their understanding.
A charge. Personally, I would feel better doing that because then the buck stops with this commission. Right now, I don't feel like the buck stops with the people who were elected to do this.
But you know, I, I said before that we should've waited really on ambulance service, uh, the uh subdivision, all that. It should've none of that been done before this new commission come aboard. I mean, that's just wait, should've not.
Well, we got an opportunity, you know, if, if there's a motion put forward, I'll ask for the second, if we want to do abolish both of these and start from scratch. And I think if we do that, I don't think we need to start from scratch today. I think some thought needs to be put into this from all seven. Any discussions, anybody wants to have with another, getting their, picking their brain and getting ideas. Then we come back, if some desire at our next meeting, which is two weeks, then we'll do it then. If not, when the commission decides they want to do it.
So just to, just to understand, the sub, subdivision committee was partially named. And none of them, there's been no work. They have not met to discuss. So at this point, abolishing it and uh and reestablishing it later on is not gonna affect any work that any of them have already done.
I'm not, anybody's aware of any work. I'm, I'm not.
I don't, I don't, I don't, that committee, really, I don't know that it needs to be abolished. I just think the chairman, we need to have a meeting and the chairman needs to get them, uh, something about what, what we sort of looking for out of them. I think the people we got nominated on that committee might be.
The other thing is, that's not, that's not officially and legally by our previous procedures, we ain't gonna do it. We have to decide the charge as a commission. It hasn't been voted on. I, as chairman, have the right, and I'll ask y'all first before I agree to appoint any committee, we have to give a charge. And we never voted to give them a charge other than advisory. That's, to me, it's just too big of an open book. What do we want?
Well, if we know what we want, do it ourselves, I guess.
Well, that's.
Miss, Mr. Chair, as you said, you, you would like to entertain a motion to abolish the committees until we, the new commission, uh, get together and discuss exactly what we're doing and what the purpose of each committee. I would like to entertain a motion that we abolish both committees.
So that would be the, now we're gonna get the committee.
We would do it, okay, okay, alright, so we'll, I'd like to do it at that time.
The thing that each, each commissioner needs to do, and I think, I think most of us who've been here for four years have, have read it till we're sick of reading the subdivision rules. They're on the commission's website, under road department, and it's rules, uh, subdivision regulations. Read them and read them and read them, cause it will probably take you three or four times reading them to get an understanding of what's there.
On the road, on the road department.
And ask questions. Cause you probably, like me, you probably have plenty of questions to ask.
I do, I need to know. I do.
Alright, any more discussion on that?
Well, yeah, I got one question for you. So on, like on subdivision regulations as they sit currently, what, what keeps the county commission, what keeps us from, you know, we, we, we sat in that meeting, I sat there as a citizen, right? And that, that got addressed and, and found Mr. Headley, uh, Commissioner Headley, so. What keeps us from knowing what needs to happen and being able to just go in and reword that book?
Nothing.
And then just take the vote on the new book without having to worry about a committee?
There, there's nothing.
So, so, you know, my, my feeling on a lot of, lot of committees is, we, we are a committee. We, we got elected by citizens to be a committee and, and they put our trust in us and I, I understand getting expert opinions. There's a difference between we go out for two weeks and we do a fact-finding mission as a commission. You'll do a fact-finding mission and get with who we need to get to and we come back and discuss what we found versus putting our faith into a committee to tell a, a non-elected committee to tell an elected commission what to do and we just take their word for things.
Well, I like Washington.
So, well, that's probably on a lot bigger scale, but.
Well, it is, but it's basically the same thing. I understand what you're saying.
We would take their advice, we would.
Yeah.
Right. But, um, but so, so having said that, I don't, I'm not sure what, where we can't go through that book and do our due diligence and get with who we need to get to and take their opinions and bring it all back together and make our decision and then get with the county attorney and scratch out what we need to and rewrite the book and then vote on the book again.
Well, that's all we have to do is, I'm gonna put a motion up, we wanna do it that way, then we can do it that way if it's a majority vote to do so.
I, um, respectfully disagree, Roger.
Alright, thanks, ma'am.
I think that there are people out there that have a, a deep knowledge of uh neighborhoods and roads and, and uh what they should look like. I, um, not that they're gonna tell us what to do, but I'd certainly like to know, uh, their thoughts. I think that this commission would, uh, be wise in considering if we put the right people on a committee, uh, would be wise to listen to what they say. They're not unlike us. They're gonna, they're, they understand how impactful it's been to their fellow citizens. And, uh, I'd surely like to keep the, uh, whether we keep this committee going or we re-establish committee with whatever number of people that you would want. I would certainly like to know what knowledgeable people have to say about it before I make a decision.
Right, well, and, and, and to that point, you know, I'm not saying that we don't, you know, that we know how to build a road or we know what it needs to look like, but that we go out and do our, you know, our investigation, our due diligence and come back to the commission, you know, that we, that we have that option.
Oh, I, I agree. Would that be a parallel effort, though? We can be doing that as the committee is doing their job.
Right.
And, and just so that I, I think a lot of those regulations just need to go away, away. But there's some, there's some good things in there that need to be preserved and, and, uh, and I think the committee could have, give us guidance on what, what we need to preserve.
Why don't we do it this way? Everybody read through the subdivision regulations, make yourself as familiar with them as you can. We have a discussion and then we decide about a committee. And this is, nothing's gotta be rugged. This does not need to be rugged. Throw something on the wall and see if it sticks. And I think this discussion we've had so far is the best we've had in a while about these things, so, uh.
I tease.
Did the motions up there to, wherever the motion is from the body, I'll accept it as for a second when we get in there meeting.
Well, here's a question to you, uh, Mr. Chair. If, if you wanna dissolve this committee, then it puts it on you to re-establish the committee and, and, uh, or is that more work for you or do you wanna keep in place what we have and continue to fill those spots and we'll charge them as we fill the last, uh, position?
No, I, I don't have a problem with, uh, dissolving the committee, uh, and this commission doing what, just exactly what I suggested. And if we decide, I think after everybody reads all the commission rules, there may be a change of opinion, a change of heart about how we are approaching. But that's why we encourage everybody to read them between now and, uh, next meeting.
Well, if that's, if that's the way you wanna go, I'll support it. If you'll pull that from the consent agenda and put it under me, I'll make the motion to dissolve that committee.
Alright, I had put it under, uh, Commissioner Hall.
If that's a group, I don't know if that's a group.
I think too, uh.
Commissioner Hall did ask for it.
She asked for it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I didn't hear that, sorry.
When we do, when we do committees, uh, like we're gonna have a seven panel committee, I think each commissioner should be able to nominate one to the committee. Not a commissioner nominate three to a committee. It's your fellow and then everybody will have, cause we all think different and we'll have somebody on that committee that all thinks different. If you get one fellow nominating three people, yeah, you know, it just, it.
That's why I said a while ago, I mean, I'm gonna get the consensus of this commission before I do the nominating or appointing to a committee, cause I don't, I don't think that should be left to the chairman. Because just like you said, I'm of one opinion. There's six other opinions up here. And we need to agree as much as we can on stuff, but that's why we have a democratic solution to most problems. Okay, all men satisfied on that? Hey, Jessica, you're up.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
I'm just gonna need to request a resolution to remove Felicia Tier from our payroll. I'm just gonna need to request a resolution to remove Felicia Tier from our payroll, and then request to advertise to hire a replacement for her.
All right, anybody have any questions? Yep, that can be on consent. You're nice, Jessica. All right.
And I, I, I just, you're, you're the, uh, you're over the transit, I just don't know everybody.
Yeah, I'm Jessie Pemberton, I'm over transit.
What's your last name?
Pemberton.
Pemberton. And you're the?
Transit. Transit director.
Transit director, I'm sorry, okay, I gotta learn everybody.
My apologies, Commissioner Hall.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Engineer Heath Sexton, Room Department.
All right, good morning. It was exciting to be at the, uh, swearing in this morning and taking the oath of office, and, um, uh, congratulations, commission. Looking forward to continuing to, and building new relationships with each of you. Uh, again, my name is Heath Sexton, I'm the county engineer, uh, uh, and, uh, my office is at the road department. And, um, uh, with this agenda, I have, uh, two items I wanted to speak about. Just one is the county, uh, applied for a, um, local road safety initiative program grant to improve, uh, uh, County Road sixteen, um, and we were awarded the portion to, uh, construct guard rail and guard rail end anchors for the three box culverts and bridge located along that section of road. And so, uh, attached, you'll have a, uh, the state's, um, agreement with the county. Um, that's a nine percent grant funding to the ten percent county match, and I'll be requesting approval for that agreement, uh, uh, in the meeting.
Ready?
And, did you wanna discuss the removal of employees?
Oh, that was me, that was me next. Any questions on the agreement? Also, um, wanted to talk about, uh, uh, of course, we always for, to add or remove an employee from payroll. We, uh, requested the commission's approval for that, and Mr. Donald Bone resigned, uh, effective November fourth, and so I would like to request, uh, approval to remove Mr. Donald Bone from the payroll effective November fourth. There's no questions on that. That's all I have for tonight, or today, and I look forward to working with each other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, uh, William Butch Billingsley.
Put the Butch in there, let's get the William off here. I'll be asking for a resolution that we, uh, do away with the ambulance committee. That's why it has ambulance on here under me. I know we've discussed it already, and, uh, but that was what I was gonna ask for today.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Okay, Mr. Childress, oh, excuse me, I got to be, Mr. Bone?
No.
Uh, Mr. Childress?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Hall?
No.
Commissioner Headley?
No, sir.
Mr. Perkins?
No, sir.
I have, uh, well, actually, as it turns out, I gotta let the chairman have a couple of things. First of all, the legislative committee representative, uh, was Commissioner Hardy, and he's no longer a commissioner, and we'll need to elect or vote someone to take his place for the ACCA legislative committee rep. And I'll be asking for a motion, someone to be that to ACCA, because I think they got a meeting in two weeks, I think is correct.
Uh, my opinion on that is, I, I would like to see the chair be our liaison, and, uh, thus why we might be looking at six road districts instead of seven. Hopefully, we'll be real busy.
I appreciate it, and I can do that. Uh, and is the, the, like I said, prerogative of the chairman is appointing different members to committees. And there's a couple of committees that I don't think we need to wait until the, the next, uh, meeting. And, uh, the nine-one-one board. And I think, uh, Commissioner Billingsley is probably one who's got the most knowledge and has been on that board. Uh, and I would, the chairman of the commission is normally the one who sits there, but I would prefer Commissioner Billingsley to take that seat, if he's agreeable, to the nine-one-one board.
I am.
And, uh, Commissioner Childress has been on the PBA, and now as a commissioner, by law, he will have to excuse himself from the PBA. And I would like to, uh, place him on the commission's committee for the courthouse. And I'll, I'll do that today. And there's one other vacancy, and, and I haven't talked to a couple others about that spot, but I need to talk to them, like I said, I was going to before, uh, the other one who's not on that courthouse committee. It would benefit the chairman, but there again, I think that's something that someone else needs to do, because I've got other things that I plan on being very involved in. And I think the courthouse is well on its way, and I think with the leadership continuing, that's been doing this through the PBA, and Commissioner Bone is on that committee, I'll be Commissioner Childress, and like I said, I'll talk to a couple of others and find the interest, just like I had said earlier. I don't wanna put somebody on there that I haven't talked to. So, I'll be, uh, doing that in our meeting, making those two appointments. All right, uh, anything else?
Yes. If this is going to take place where I am on the ambulance committee, I mean, not ambulance committee, I'm sorry, the nine-one-one board. As most of you know, I'm the chairperson for the Chilton County Volunteer Firefighter Association. Uh, their meeting is tomorrow night, and Joe Cole is the chairman. And I will be stepping down as chairman, and by our bylaws, Joe Cole will become chairman. And also, with the nine-one-one board, the, the chairman of the Chilton County Volunteer Firefighter Association holds a position on that board, and it's been the consent of customary of the previous commissioners that they approve him, even though he's automatically on there. So, if I can, I'll be asking if we can approve him on the nine-one-one board.
That's fine, I will put that under you.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, uh, anything else? All right, we've got, uh, seven minutes, and we will convene for our regular meeting.